All right, it's four o'clock and we're going to call this meeting of the February 6th of the Planning Commission to order. We'll call Dean. Oh, I'm sorry, Margie, did we meet the Kansas Open Meetings Act posting notice?
I can confirm that the packet was posted and the required notice was provided.
Thank you. Dean, roll call.
I'm going to call Rule. Commissioner Seidow.
Here.
Mr. Van Covern.
Here.
Commissioner Alt.
Here.
Commissioner Farber.
Here.
Commissioner Waters.
Here.
Chair Mike Sell.
Here.
So we have, currently have six appointed members and we have a full attendance of six and that constitutes a quorum for today's meeting so we can move ahead with the agenda as presented.
Very good. I hope you've all had a chance to read the minutes of the January 16th meeting and if you have, I'd entertain a motion for approval or corrections as noted.
I move we approve the minutes of the January 16th meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none being heard, motion carries. Dean, news business?
We have multiple public hearings for the commission today. The first two involve land use decisions and rezoning and then we have a third one, which is a legislative matter, but we're going to begin with item 3.1.
And Dean, before we start this item, I'd like to also disclose that I do work for 1858 Properties and that work pertains to signage and since there is no signage on this action, I feel confident I can make a decision as a board member fairly.
Yeah, as we discussed, we don't view that as a, as a direct conflict because there's nothing on this agenda item that relates to any signage that might be installed on the property. This is a question of appropriate zoning classification. And so this property application has been filed by Guy Walker on behalf of 1858 Properties and the request is before you is to take a zoning lot, which is Zone C3 Shopping Center and a zoning lot that is zoned R3 multi-family residential and combine those into a single zoning lot that would be zoned as part of the C4 Central Business District. And so the property that's in question is on the south side of Mulberry, east or west of Santa Fe and bordered on the west by 7th Street. And so you can see from the aerial photo that the eastern portion facing Santa Fe is developed and the western portion is not. We included in your packet a copy of an ordinance that was approved and recorded and Dustin, you can show them on the map there, the little 10-foot corridor that formally and is still shown on property mapping as an alley, but that has been vacated and part of the reason for vacating that alley was so there wouldn't be a gap in ownership, of public ownership between the two lots. So this, this is all combined together. And so in our, our research of this property, we determined that the existing building that is there today was built in 1948 and then in 1968, it was substantially remodeled into a Western Auto Store and that Western Auto Store operated in that location until 1991 when Western Auto relocated out to the, an outlawed at the Central Mall. And then if you go by there today, you'll find that is urgent care and not a Western Auto Store. And Western Auto essentially got bought out by Advanced Auto Parts. And so after that, this was the location of Mr. Windshield and then later Safelite Auto Glass and the building's been vacant since Safelite closed its doors at this location. So it's 250 by 120 lots on the east and the building occupies the entire south half of the lot or Lot 72. So it's 6,000 square feet. It's roughly a 14-foot tall building and one of the things that's notable is that because it was used for Western Auto and other automotive service, it has overhead doors facing Mulberry. And so the building has been modified over time and directly to the south of it, there was a Sonic Drive-In that was built. That Sonic Drive-In was torn down and rebuilt and expanded in 2011. We went back to determine what was on the lot to the west and determined that that used to house an apartment building, which was torn down just about the time that Western Auto moved in. The other thing we wanted to point out is you can see that on the east, the lots are 100 feet deep north to south, but on the, the west side, it's only 60 feet deep because Sonic has incorporated some of that lot into their parking and has their trash dumpster there. So the Board of, or the Downtown Design Review Board reviewed some exploratory renovations and removals that the owner was going to make. Essentially what they wanted to do was peel off some of the metal siding and other coverings so they could explore what was underneath it to determine its condition and that was approved. And then later in 2023, they came forward with a request to vacate the alley. And so one thing we would note is that the alley is gone, but there's still utility easement there because there's a major 12-inch sanitary sewer line that runs through there. So the Blue Beacon International purchased this property in 2020 and then in 2022, ownership was transferred to 1858 Properties. They're looking to redevelop the property by remodeling the existing building into a restaurant and their proposal is to rezone both the east and western lots and make them part of the C4 Central Business District. And so it's, it's, the C3 zoning was because it was an auto service-related business and the R3 zoning was because that was a apartment site. So you don't need C4 zoning to have a restaurant, but they would like all their holdings that they have in that vicinity to be part of the C4 Central Business District. And so this is to make a uniform district there and your job is to determine whether the change in zoning and uses from residential housing to parking would be compatible with the zoning and uses of nearby property. And so the parking lot that's being proposed is a permitted use, the restaurant is a permitted use. There's no minimum setback requirements in the C4 District. And then I think the other thing that's notable is that in the C4 District, businesses are exempt from providing the prescribed amount of parking. And so we've looked at this and the preliminary plans are for an indoor seating capacity of 103 seats and then there's a proposal to add an outdoor patio dining area to the north and that would add an additional 38 seats. And so normally that would require 47 off-street parking spaces, but because C4 doesn't have a minimum requirement, they can use public parking, on-street parking or shared parking to meet their parking needs. The applicant also owns a parking lot across the street on the east side of Santa Fe that is used by both Homewood Suites and Yaya's. The conceptual plan, which is not part of the application, but it's just there to show you what the concept is, it shows 27 parking spaces, five of them are north of the building and those would be used for takeout and handicapped accessible parking. And then the other thing that we would want to point out, which was not, just so you would be aware, if you notice a little bump out there of the parking, that parking would be located in the public right-of-way from Mulberry Street and that would require the separate approval of a license agreement by the City Commission to have private stalls located in the public right-of-way. And so this property's been zoned this way for quite some time. There were a number with the Sonic redevelopment and what occurred in 1968, almost all the residences on the west side of 7th Street are gone and so the character is commercialized and no longer residential in character. And so the owner doesn't have any interest in re-establishing a residential use on that lot and given the changes, it makes sense to incorporate that into a commercial area. And so this property is located in the original townsite of Salina, is located in the Downtown Business Improvement District and we think it's more suitable for commercial redevelopment than residential redevelopment. And so it is suitable based on the zoning around it to be incorporated into the Central Business District. And so the property across the street to the north is part of the C4 District. The property to the east was rezoned to C4 in 2020 and if you look at the R3, it's really kind of limited to the Emmanuel Lutheran Church that's across the street to the northwest and then there's the St. John's Lutheran Church that's across the street to the west within the housing farther south on the west side of 7th. And so because of the predominance of C4 zoning, we believe that the C4 zoning being requested would be compatible with the zoning and uses of, of nearby property. And so again, with the removal of so many of the structures and the changed conditions on this block, we don't think that this zoning change will have much of an impact on the surrounding area. We have utilities and fire hydrants and sewer service in place. There's a drainage system with a 48-inch storm sewer in 7th Street and this is right at the fringe of the downtown land use area and we think that this request is consistent with two goals in the plan, which is to encourage infill development in the core downtown and surrounding downtown neighborhoods. And so whether you view this as the core downtown or a surrounding neighborhood to downtown. And then the other thing downtown is to encourage downtown to be a park once destination. And so the idea is to be able to park once and take advantage of multiple opportunities. So this afternoon, your options would be to recommend a approval of the request for C4 zoning as submitted. You could recommend that consideration of today's request be postponed to a future meeting date if you don't think you have adequate information on the plans for the property. You could recommend denial of the application if findings can be made to that effect. So on page eight, we've offered our recommendation, which be to approve the request for C4 zoning for these two properties and we've offered four reasons in support of our recommendation on page eight there. We just think that this is consistent with the surrounding zoning pattern and it's very unlikely that anyone's going to want to build an apartment house back on that corner lot and this is consistent with the goals in the comprehensive plan to encourage infill development downtown. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that the Planning Commission might have. We do have representatives of the applicant here if you have project-specific questions, but the, the plans that we put in your packet are conceptual for the property and obviously there's modifications that would be needed to made to the building to make it suitable for a restaurant use. But with that, staff is open to any questions you have or you can address questions to the applicant.
Questions of staff? Looks pretty straightforward. Would the applicant care to address the commission?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Jeff Mase, Compro Realty, 157 South 7th. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have. If you don't have them of staff, you may not have them of us. I did have a question of staff relative to the site plan as it relates to this, this request and the C4 zoning. In order to make that parking lot to the north function as it should and still get some, get some adequate parking immediately north of the building, that site plan question, does that then go in front of, you, you said that would be a license agreement for the City Commission to handle?
Yeah, if you put, if you put a private improvement such as parking stalls that a private owner's going to own and they're going to be located within the public right-of-way, there's just a license agreement. It would be more permanent than what you'd see with sidewalk dining license agreements, but the Homewood Suites has a couple different license agreements that just authorize private use to the public right-of-way. And so that, that would be an item that the City Commission would approve through a license agreement and would not be part of today's action.
Okay, very good, thank you. As you can surmise by the detail of the plan, this was born from an active pursuit of a restaurateur and they kind of got down to the place that, hey, if we can, if we can do this, then let's go forward. And we said, well, slow down because we don't know if we can do this until we get through this process. So that's what you see before you today. There are going to be some slight modifications as a result from staff relative to seating inside and stuff like that, but happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I guess just to clarify, the, the plan shows that there might be an opportunity to have two different tenants in this building because the, the west side is shown as kind of a blank slate. And so as of now, the plan is not for this tenant to occupy the whole space?
No, not today. They're hoping not, just from a pro-rata share of expenses, if you will, but yeah.
Any questions on Mr. Mase?
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on this item? Anyone care to make a motion?
Seems pretty straightforward to me. I would recommend approval of application Z23-12 for the request for C4 zoning.
I second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application Z23-12. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none being heard, motion carries. Thank you.
Just for the benefit of the applicant, this is a recommendation and it will go to the City Commission on the 26th of February. The other thing I would share with the applicant is due to a change of adopted procedure by the City Commission, ordinances, rezoning, property are now done in a single reading and not second readings, so there will not be a second reading after the 26th. That will be the final action. So I think with that, we're ready to move on to item 3.2, which is a public hearing on several different requests associated with property owned by Southlands Development. And Mr. Hirsch will show you on the map the property that we're discussing, but it's essentially, it's a very large 92-acre tract of land. It's on the west side of I-135 and it's north of Waterwell Road and the applications filed relate to the future land use map, a request to annex the property into the city, a request to change the zoning from its current agricultural status and a request to plat a, a portion of the property, but we're still working through with the applicant what that portion may be. And so I'll let Mr. Hirsch get into that more deeply, but most of our focus this afternoon would be on the future land use map. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Hirsch.
Thank you, Dean. So the property that is the subject of the conversation of this application is a 92.81 acre tract of land at the northwest corner of the I-135 Interstate and Waterwell Road the annexation area would be the full 92.81 acres. So what they're looking at, as from the applicant's standpoint, is annexing the entire tract of land and then once they've done that, they're proposing to plat a portion of it. And as Mr. Andrew noted, we are talking to the, the applicant and his design team on what that ends up looking like. And so they are requesting that this, this item be continued so that we can continue to work with Mr. Bradley and, and Southlands Development on that. So this would be potentially split into two pieces, a south piece and a north piece. And then there's also a zoning component, which would match the plating piece once we've, we've got that nailed down. The biggest piece we want to discuss with the Planning Commission is getting guidance from you on the future land use map because that's also going to be a component of the project. On the screen is what we currently have. Currently, the entire 92.81 acres is part of the employment hub, which is primarily intended for industrial-type uses. And with this being a major interchange, the question for you is, is that still appropriate? A couple of options that we've identified is to keep the existing future land use map as it is without, without any changes. Another option you could guide staff and the applicant to explore is having commercial on the south 55 acres, maintaining the employment land use category on the north 36 acres so that the, the piece of property closest to the interchange would still be commercial while further north, you have more industrial uses. Option two would be similar where the corner would be commercial, so the, the south 55 acres would be commercial. However, we would, in this scenario, have a change of the north piece to suburban residential and that's like housing for single-family homes, maybe duplexes, townhomes, that type of development. So a lower intensity versus like a multifamily. And option three would, would be similar, but instead of suburban residential, the north piece would be urban residential and that's when you get into higher density residential and, and multifamily type configurations and development. And then option four is, is commercial of the entire 92 acres. So those are some of the, the options that the developers and staff have been talking about. Right now, the biggest piece that, that the developer knows and is really wanting to secure is a commercial land use category or reclassification for the south 55 acres. What happens to the north is still a little bit up in the air. They don't have concrete plans on that and so your guidance and what, what you think is most appropriate would be appreciated. So with that, we'll take any questions that you might have and we do have a representative for the applicant here, Mr. Hobby, to answer questions as well.
The one thing, and if you can go to the preliminary plat, the conceptual plat, Dustin.
Sure.
So the only thing that's, that's of, of some certainty is that there's a long-range plan for Marcella Drive to be extended to the south so that there is a connection between Schilling Road and Waterwell Road by the street system. And so that's, from a design standpoint, that's, you know, the alignment is not fixed. This is a, this is a similar situation to Virginia Drive over by Menards, which at some point is eventually supposed to tie down to Schilling Road and so we have some interconnectivity. And so that, that much needs to be taken into account, but what we're looking for you, just, just by way of background, if, if many of you have been here a long time, you can probably remember a time when Schilling Road and I-135 was not a full interchange. And then that got converted to a full interchange and then there were some challenges because of, we let Walmart in there and some of the other things and so it was expressed that it was a difficult for trucks and, and larger vehicles to access the airport industrial area via Schilling Road. So the city applied for and obtained a grant from KDOT to construct a new interchange at Waterwell Road and one of the driving factors in that was that Waterwell Road and Centennial Road was a better route for large vehicles going in and out of the airport industrial area. So if you look at the expansion that's happened out at Schwann's or Tony's Pizza, a lot of truck volume in that area is associated with that and so for that, the, the preferred route is Centennial Road, Waterwell Road. So at the time, when the interchange was built, it was kind of envisioned that the area to the east of Centennial Road would be an extension of the airport industrial area. So therefore, when Dustin put up the existing land use map, you can see that the entire area was shown as future employment, which would be indicative of extension of the airport industrial area. Well, that, that may or may not be needed or desired and so the first proposal we have is for some interstate-oriented commercial at the interchange and we don't know how far that would extend. So one option is to leave the industrial designation in place everywhere but the south portion. There's been some, there's always the talk about a need for additional housing or land for different forms of housing and so one of the options that Dustin put before you was to show that area as suburban residential and that would indicate a lower density, kind of a single-family pattern like you have to the north. Or the other option is urban residential and that would indicate that that would be a suitable place to build multifamily housing. And of course, the other option is to take the whole thing and make all 92 acres future commercial and then you have to stop and think, well, how likely is it that all 92 acres would develop in some commercial fashion? So in terms of us going back and working with the applicant to refine their plating and zoning applications a little better, we were just wanting to give the commission an opportunity to give some feedback on what, what they thought was the likely scenario for this area. So that, that was going to be our focus for this afternoon, was to get some feedback from the commission.
Questions of staff?
I would note that if, when you do get to the point of making a decision in a motion, we do have a recommendation on page three that basically says that you would continue the hearing for these items or for this application to our next meeting, which is February 20th. So we would want a specific date and then provide whether- So we would want a specific date, and then provide whatever guidance you decide on the future land use map. So page three is where you'd have that recommendation.
And I'm going to throw this out to the applicant as well. Would there be more guidance as to what, would you have any kind of idea of what the future use of that north portion might be at that time? Thank you.
I'm Gary Hobby, and here to represent the Southlands Development Group. We have right now specifically about a 10 and 1/2 acre tract of land that is under contract for a business-type commercial business. So that's one reason why we wanted the south portion, at least the minimum of that, that 55 acres into a commercial zoning area. We have some options that have been thrown out on the table since the potential contract for sale has been brought to us to look at. So the north portion of the property, having to work with the Community Housing Development Organization and having some duplexes just about a mile to the south of this, there is quite a large volume of noise coming off the interstate. And so we have kind of put any residential housing on the very far-back burner. We would rather stay with the commercial or potential industrial uses on the very north portion of it, but the south portion definitely stay into the commercial tracks. We have some, like I say, opportunities that have been thrown out to us for industrial, yes. We do know that there is some opportunities for that. We wanted to eventually bring into the west tract of land as an industrial area and keep that for industrial zoning as well. But this east tract, we feel like is more conducive to highway service and a C-7-type commercial zoning that we're requesting. And that's part of our thought process so far.
Thank you. And any questions of Gary? We may come back to that.
Sure.
Now, Dustin, from a housekeeping aspect, if we leave the zoning, I mean, the future land use designation for that north part alone and change it to south, or to commercial on the south part, that can be changed later. But from a housekeeping standpoint, is that more work for you? Or tell me how that works?
So from what I'm hearing from Mr. Hobby, what the applicant would prefer would be option number one. And that would have a future land use classification on the south 55 acres of commercial. And commercial would be, that commercial land use category would allow for different types of commercial zoning to be applied to the property, including C-7, which is our highway commercial, and is what the applicant is actually looking at. So what that means is, you would not recommend any changes on the north 36 acres. However, you would recommend a change in land use category for the south 55 acres from employment to commercial. And then that north piece would then be available for potential industrial zoning down the line if something were to come forward with a project.
Because if the north portion remains as unemployment, or as employment and future industrial, and something dramatic or even undramatic changes in five years, and they want to do something, and they've got somebody that wants to buy it for housing, then it can be revisited at that time. But it seemed to us that just focusing on the portion that there was specific interest in, and leaving the rest unchanged, might be the way to go. But it's, we were just looking for your guidance. So when we came back, we weren't giving you five choices again, that we'd focus in on the one that you were most supportive of or the most likely to occur.
And are you okay with moving the rest of this to the February 20th meeting?
Yes, I think that'd be our request, that we go ahead and move forward with the 20th and February the 20th meeting for final decisions, yes.
Okay, very good. Any further questions of Mr. Hobby?
Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? So what's your gut opinion on the request for going commercial on the south half of that? Is that?
Fine, yeah.
Good with me.
It seems natural. I mean, you know, we've sure visited stuff on the east side of the interstate there, on that interchange for, you know, that kind of development. So it seems natural and seems appropriate. Do you need a motion on that?
We would need a motion that would postpone consideration of the applications listed, which are M-241, A-241, Z-241, and P-241, to February 20th. And that would be your motion. And then the context of the conversation, let us know that to bring forward. Option one, we do come back to you.
Okay, thank you. So do I hear a motion to postpone applications M-241, A-241, Z-241, and P-241?
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Move and second?
Have to have it specifically.
Yeah, I'm sorry, to the February 20th meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries. Thank you.
So housekeeping, should we hang on to all of this documentation so you don't have to reprint it for the 20th?
You can have the maps and do, you're going to get, this is a three-page staff report. You'll get a longer staff report once we have things pinned down a little bit and we can be more specific. But we'll reuse what we have to put in the packet. But there will be a separate staff report on each of the four items. So they'll be all voted on separately.
Legislative matters.
In terms of legislative matters, we have a proposed text amendment that was initiated by the Planning Commission after discussions with you at your November meeting. And we've done some initial work with signage for the public use district and for schools. And then we did some follow-up with treating the high school campuses different than the elementary school and middle school campuses. And so this is the consideration of an amendment to the university district sign regulations to look at the number-size setback and maximum height of signs, including looking at electronic changeable copy signs allowed in the university zoning district. So we kind of moved through the districts one by one. And we, to be honest, no one that had university district property was expressing much interest in having electronic changeable copy signs. So that's the last district that we worked with. And that change was initiated by the Planning Commission and not by any landowners that had university district property. But just for the commission's benefit, there are five campuses or locations that are zoned U, University District, the former Marymount College that has the administration building, and the Kansas Highway Patrol Training Center that has retained its university zoning, because that's still a flexible mixed-use district. The former St. John's Military School campus is now owned by St. Francis Ministries. That has retained its university district zoning. The Kansas Wesleyan University Campus, the K-State Salina Campus, and then south of that, the Salina Area Technical College Campus. Those are the areas in the city that are zoned university district. And so when we looked at this at 2015, we were asking the Planning Commission, should the same types of electronic changeable copy signs allowed in other districts be allowed in university districts? And the commission said yes. And if so, how large should they be? And the Planning Commission kind of followed along with what we had done in the public use districts. And so when we talk about electronic changeable copy signs, you've got changeable copy signs that are text-only. You have graphic display signs that have both text and pictorial images. And then you have the basic video display sign, which is primarily a video-quality display with very little text or static text. And so when we asked you about that, about allowing those in the university district, you said yes. You said you didn't want to limit them to just arterial and collector streets. You thought that the size, there's no maximum size limit that you set on any MC sign. You thought that the hourly limitations, the nighttime limitations should be kept in place. You thought the automatic dimmer control requirement should be maintained. And so we kind of walked through all those things. We passed a text amendment that we have provided for you on page three and four. And in 2018, we went back and revisited things, looking at the high school campuses. And you recommended that high schools be treated different than elementary and middle schools. And so the size of the sign allowed went from 64 square feet to 100 square feet, allowed the display area to be up to 60% of the total sign, didn't limit the number of wall signs, and no size limit on individual signs. And so what we told you was that we were going to look at those things and kind of use that as an approach to look at the university district. And so you're being asked to relook at the limitations that were adopted in 2015. And we've been working with representatives of the Salina Area Technical College about their signage plans for their campus. And the signage that they proposed exceeded the size limitations that are currently in our regulations, both as to sign area and setback requirements. And so the sign that they're proposing also could be interpreted as exceeding the 50% of the total sign area, because it's attached to an existing sign, but it's not an integral part of that sign. So we told you that we were going to try to take an approach similar to what we did with the high schools. And today was set as a hearing to discuss and consider possible changes. And so I think one of the things that's most notable is if you have a 32-square-foot sign, you can have a reduced setback. But anything larger than that requires a 50-foot setback. Well, if you take a sign and you make it be set back 50 feet from the street, it kind of defeats the purpose of the visibility and especially for drivers. So that 50-foot requirement, which has been in place for some time, it seemed excessive. Most of the setbacks we have in our other districts are 10 feet. And so we're recommending 10 feet be the minimum setback for all signs, regardless of size, instead of the 50 feet. The other thing we noted is that no one has ever proposed putting a pole sign up in a university district. We don't have any presently. And it seemed like all the signs that we're getting discussing is ground signs. So we were recommending eliminating that. We also recommended increasing the height limit, which is presently 10 feet, for any university district sign to 15 feet. And then we're also recommending that in looking at a campus, that we allow three square feet of total sign area per linial foot of building for an inch, instead of the current limitation, which is, we thought was in error, but was what was adopted, which is one square feet for every six square feet of building for an inch, which is like the inverse of all of our other districts, and didn't make a lot of sense to us. And then we allow up to 2/3 of the total sign area to be allocated to electronic screen. And so we were recommending that that be adopted. And so the only other thing that we have done, as we've looked at these, is we've had discussions with previous commissions about the U.S. Supreme Court case that made us relook at our entire sign code, which is that if you regulate sign based on the message that they express or regulate them that way, that's considered content-based. You can regulate their structure. You can't really regulate their function. So we've recommended that the beginning portion of this, that deals with function types, just be eliminated, except for the advertising sign, which is still considered to be a functional, not a functional, but a structural type of sign. So we would allow electronic changeable copy signs, ground signs, the scoreboard-mounted signs that we have at Kansas Wesleyan, and wall signs. And so there's the type of sign that's mounted at the scoreboard at Kansas Wesleyan. You have, we're proposing that there be no limitation on the total number of signs, so that we're not going to tell Kansas Wesleyan, you can have X number of signs and distribute them around your campus. And when you get more than X amount, you can't have any more signs. So there's no, we're not recommending any limitation. The limitations would come into the size, the square footage of what you can have. Because of what work has been done at the Gray's Family Sports Complex, we don't feel a need to have a separate set of requirements for stadiums. And so that would be eliminated. The maximum height would change, so that it would be 15 feet. And then the required setback, we would get rid of the differentiation. And so all sign setbacks, the minimum setback would be 10 feet. And then in terms of the electronic changeable copy signs, the primary change would be to allow the 67% allowable sign area and the height of 15 feet. I don't know if graphically you have displayed the sign, any of the signs that were being proposed, or the ones that were up. But so this is the one that's being proposed at the Salina Technical College. And we couldn't issue the permit for it because of height limitations and the combined size, and also the setback in terms of proximity to Centennial Road due to its size. So if these changes were made, it would accommodate this sign and other types of signs. And then I think, Dustin, we have examples of the signs that were approved at Central High and at South High. And so you can see that they're a similar type design. But they are larger than what a elementary school could have, and they are larger than what would have been allowed before the text amendment. And they have some similarity to what was being proposed out at the Technical College. So that's kind of what we came up with, was to try to replicate what was done with the high school campuses to make them consistent, and to eliminate some things that we thought were maybe a little overly restrictive when it comes to setbacks and heights and those types of things. So that is the combination of amendments that we have come up with. And so this is coming before the commission to see if you would like to recommend approval of those changes. of those changes or would like to approve those changes with some modifications. Or if you want to postpone consideration to let us provide you with some additional information or you could say, start over and refer back to us and say, we think we can do better than this. Or you could recommend that the status quo be maintained and that there be no changes made to the existing sign code as it relates to our university properties. But we've tried to outline you the history. We've tried to outline for you what properties in Salina are zoned university district and, and the changes that we are proposing to make. So with that, we're open to any questions that you might have.
Any questions or concerns on this application? Seems like a move forward and it seems like it, the other stuff was kind of antiquated. So it's an appropriate time for that. Well, yeah, that'd be great.
I'd move that we approve section, or move, let's see. Application Z 23-11 has outlined on number one of the staff recommendations that planning commission would recommend approval of this proposal as drafted.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve application Z 23-11 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
So that will conclude our public hearing items on today's agenda. The last item on your agenda is an administrative item. And I think you're familiar, having taken action on other items related to the property referred to as the Dry Creek Edition or property purchased by Salina Destination. But if you'll recall, on December 5th, you looked at a preliminary plat for this area. And that had a, a single apartment site lot and a holding lot. And you approved that and recommended that the apartment site be rezoned to R3 multifamily residential. You, that went to the city commission on the annexation piece on December 18th, 2023. And that property was annexed into the city limits before the end of the year. And then on January 8th, the city commission approved an ordinance rezoning the property to R3 as well as a future land use map amendment. And so one of the things that we mentioned to the applicant and we wanted to mention to the planning commission, in which we had a meeting on this morning, is that the state of Kansas gave municipalities the option, if they chose historically an ordinance to be passed by the city commission, had to have a first reading and then there was a delay. In a subsequent meeting, it would get final approval. Well, the city commission decided that they wanted to take advantage of the option that the state law gives to approve ordinances at a single meeting, at a single sitting. So what we have done historically is that we have taken your recommendations. It goes to the city commission. They approve an ordinance on first reading, rezoning a piece of property subject to plating. And then that, that ordinance is held. And if and when the developer comes back with their final plat, then the ordinance gets final approval. Well, the, there's still a requirement that the plating occur before the ordinance takes effect. So we wanted to explain and we put in your packet what happened on January 8th, is that an ordinance rezoning this property was approved. It was enacted and it was published, but it does not take legal effect until or unless this final plat is completed. So if we had a scenario, which we have had, where an ordinance gets passed rezoning a piece of property and for whatever reason, market changes, change in ownership, whatever, the property doesn't end up getting final platted, then the matter would be referred back to the planning commission to recommend that that zoning be repealed. And then the ordinance, the city commission would take action to repeal that ordinance because it never went into effect. It puts a little more burden on, well, for you to have to take a follow-up action. But the main thing is that the, the city planning staff will have to track to say, okay, well, we had this ordinance approved on the 8th, but we can't go and change our, officially change our map to show it is multifamily till this plating step is complete. So this, this is coming for you to complete that plating step. Upon final approval of the plat, then the zoning change would go into effect and we would officially change our, our map. But because that, that is a change from what we have done historically, where the second and final reading doesn't occur till you have a final plat, we just wanted to share that information with you because it is, it's a change in the, in the way those things are done. So I think you're familiar with the fact that this property's been divided into Phase 1, which is what you see outlined there in the plat. And then a future Phase 2, where the development is not determined. And there's ongoing discussions between the developer and the city commission about what that development could consist of. But they have now come back with their final plat for this Lot 1, Block 1. The apartment site, I think you're familiar with the area being directly south of American Ed Credit and directly west of Fairfield Inn and, and Menards. And so this plat does not have any frontage on Magnolia. All its frontage is on Virginia. We have pointed out that Virginia is improved to city street standards. And so we believe that this subdivision design conforms with the street improvement requirements for new subdivisions. No changes are proposed to Virginia Drive. This plat has 106, or 1,076 lineal feet of frontage on Virginia Drive. They're proposing three driveway connections, no internal connections. I think we pointed out last time that the plan is to build 250 apartment units and that would necessitate having a secondary access, which we discussed is coming from the northwest from Magnolia Road. And so it's a single 11.2 self-contained lot. It meets all the dimensional requirements for an R3 lot. It's large enough to support 250 units. We've summarized and given you a map showing the infrastructure that's out there, which includes existing water and sewer lines. The water line is on the east side of Virginia Drive. The sewer line's on the west side. And I don't, I don't know if it is put into where it can be put on the screen. But I have in your packet provided a, towards the rear where there's site plans. There's a, a drawing that has some blue lines highlighted on it. And what that is showing is the loop that they would need to complete in order to build the first phase of apartments. And so the, the backbone is in place in terms of, of water and sewer, but they'll have to install some internal extensions of water and sewer lines. And so we have electric service in place. We have, one gas has a gas line on Magnolia Road and on Virginia Drive. We've outlined what schools, children living in this area would attend. Fire access or response would be from Station 3. There would be a park service area. And then all the access would be from Virginia Drive. We're still working with the applicant on finalizing some of the utility easements, but that would be worked out before the easements are accepted by the city commission. And then on page eight, we pointed out that there's three items that are outside the boundary of the plat that would be addressed separately by dedication. And that would be completing the dedication of right-of-way for Magnolia Road, since this doesn't have frontage on Magnolia Road. They would need to dedicate an emergency access easement that we've depicted in your packet that would come out over here and extend up to Magnolia Road. And that would need to be in place through an easement. And then they have a stormwater easement that would drain the pond over to Dry Creek. Since those three are outside the boundary of the plat, those would be dedicated separately. So what improvements do we need? We don't need any improvements to Virginia Drive. Improvements to Magnolia Road were, were in the capital improvement program that the planning commission looked at. I think there's also a likelihood that the city receives some funding from KDOT to do Phase 1. They would be responsible to construct public sidewalks on the west side of Virginia Drive, to construct their detention pond, to construct all the internal water mains and public sewer lines. And then we wanted to point out that in cases where the city goes out and invests in utilities ahead of development, there are benefit fees that are due and owing. And we have broken those down on page eight of your report. So there's a water fee of $79,000, a sewer fee of $119,000 and a, a fee of $153,000 for Virginia Drive. And again, that is to, for the city to recover its costs from building those things in advance. So again, I think the commission understands that Phase 1A is the three buildings closest to Virginia Drive. And then the remaining six apartment buildings would follow after that. You recommended that the land use plan be amended to accommodate this. And on page 10, we have recommended 10 conditions of approval. And that's just to reinforce what the developers' responsibilities would be. And that would be that we need to have an internal public water line and, and fire hydrants in place before we start building buildings in Phase 1A. All the utilities that go into this development will be placed underground. They will construct a sidewalk on the west side of Virginia Drive. They'll be responsible to construct an interim emergency access road. They need to complete their improvements of public utilities before we issue building permits. They will need to construct and have inspected their final detention pond design. They need to pay their benefit fees. And then I don't, we've discussed it previously with the planning commission. I think you've seen it in some of the newer subdivisions. But just to reinforce, the post office doesn't allow individual properties to have individual mailboxes anymore. So you can't put a mailbox out in front of your house because they won't deliver to it. So developments like this and new subdivisions have to do community mailboxes. And so we would, that's just put in there to remind them of that responsibility. And so we think this is ready for your action and approval tonight. But in the alternative, if you think there's too many unanswered questions or things that are still up in the air, you could postpone consideration if you feel that additional information is needed before taking action. I do believe we have a representative, the, the surveyor that worked on the plat, I believe has joined us via Zoom. But staff would be open to any questions you have about the project. But we've done annexation, we've done zoning, we've done a land use amendment. And this is the final plat that would create the outlines of the building lot that they want to build on. So with that, we're open to any questions you might have.
Any questions of staff on this application? Could we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, Roger Dill, thank you so much for considering this. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have that I might be able to answer.
Thank you, Roger. Are you aware of the 10 staff recommendations in regards to this action?
I am, yes, sir.
And you're okay with those?
Yes, sir. I don't see anything that causes us any grief.
Very good, very good. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Dill? Thank you. Bring it back to the, oh, do we have any public here or anybody else online, Dustin?
Yeah, for the record, I, I will note that we have not had anyone from the public all meeting online.
Thank you.
And we did, we only had one person from the public in the meeting earlier and they elected not to speak, so just for the record.
Very good, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion and action.
I think it's pretty straightforward. I would move that we approve this application for final plat. It's P 23-7A with the 10 conditions outlined on page 10 and 11.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve application P 23-7A. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
Can we confirm who the second was?
Right here.
Okay, Doug, thank you.
Okay. For other matters, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to Margie to confirm, but I believe that Margie has reached out to planning commissioners about the week of, or the days of February 15th and 16th. And as you, if you follow the news, you'll know that there's been some, some discussion about painted wall signs, murals, distinguishing between the two size limitations, those types of things. And we have secured the services of a consultant who does work nationally on that topic and is currently doing work around the country, including in Omaha, Nebraska, where they're discussing the same questions. And it's a, it's a nationwide discussion about when is something a mural and when is something a sign and, and other associated things. And so they are going to be in Salina February 15th and 16th. And I think, Margie, you've had communication with them trying to figure out the best time and day for that. For, what we're trying to do is have a single session where we would have the planning commission, city commission and downtown design review board all meet together to hear and discuss with the consultant. And it would probably be in this room, but I think Margie was trying to get a consensus of preferred times and so I'll let her go further.
So I have heard from most commissioners, thank you, those of you that you responded. We are looking at Friday, February 16th for that joint meeting with the planning commission, design review board and the community art and design, which will be here in 107. So if you haven't responded to me, feel free to come talk to me after the meeting. We just want to know if you would prefer a morning or an afternoon time. And then from there, we're going to get however many board members that we can get in one room at one time and see how we can get the most people.
Great. So what we'll likely do or have done in the past when we've had those joint things is we would take these seats and we would just turn them this way. And so we would have the, the presenter there and have the screen in the background. Because if you've ever sat out here, you've got to kind of crane your necks and you've got a post to, to look around. So it's, it's much more conducive if there's graphics or things to, to look at is to have the seating face that way. So nobody will be at the dais, everybody will be equal down on the... So nobody will be at the dais, everybody will be equal down on the, the floor and seating. But we're just looking to, to pick the time, day, or the, the afternoon or morning and a timeframe that works best to get the best attendance because the more participation we get, then everybody can get exposed to the same message and, and have an opportunity to ask questions or make comments that the rest of the group can hear. So interchange of thoughts and ideas is welcome, so.
Great.
But if you want, if you haven't gotten back with Margie, she would be excited to hear your preferences, so.
Great.
The other scheduling item is that two weeks from today is the 20th. And it's also a scheduled meeting. You postpone consideration of the Wendy Creek applications to that meeting. We also have the final plat coming forward for the fire station project. And I don't know if you saw in the, that there was some coverage, but the city commission met and we've, we've had different discussions with this commission about situations where we have subdivision plats and the status and condition of the abutting perimeter streets. And so the city commission has expressed its preferences for improvements. They want to see along East Crawford there. And so those will be reported to you as part of that report. But the final plat for the fire station site on East Crawford will be coming back to you. And then we have two, some of you may or may not know that the, the planning commission and city commission decided that any proposal to open a vape shop or tobacco shop needed to go through a conditional use permit review by the planning commission and have notification of neighbors and have the location and plan reviewed by the planning commission. And we have two of those applications for the 20th to come before you. One is for the former family video store that's there at Broadway and South Ninth. The other one unfortunately opened its doors before we could visit with them, and that's out on Marketplace, Belmont and Marketplace, so. But they have been contacted and understand that they need conditional use permit approval in order to operate at that location. So those, those will be on the agenda for your consideration.
Very good. Okay, public forum. Do we have anybody online, Dustin?
No, we do not have anyone online or in the room it appears.
Okay, any commissioners want to talk about anything?
Yep.
Okay, any staff, anything that's? Margie let me know too, if you, if you don't respond to her by the end of business on Monday, she's going to come and personally get your response for that meeting. That ought to be a good one. I, I look forward to that, so. Anyway, with no other public forum, I take an entertaining motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.